Call order, the city council meeting for City of East Grand Forks for January 4th, 2022 is now five o'clock. Would city clerk please call roll?
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olsted.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riappel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Does Attorney McCorm please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have an open forum, an opportunity for members of the public to address city council on items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action, we defer to staff boards and commissions for research and future council agendas if appropriate. Is anybody here that wants to address the council on the items not on the agenda tonight? I see none. Move on to annual business. Set time and hour of regular city council meetings. Consider adopting resolution 21-01-01, a resolution set time and hour of regular city council meetings and work sessions.
Move.
By Riappel?
Second.
Second by Larson. Any questions or discussion? I see none. Roll call.
Vedder?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Move on to number two, designate official newspaper. Consider adopting resolution 21-2-01-02, a resolution to designate the exponent as official newspaper.
Move.
By Johnson.
Second.
Second by Vedder. Questions or discussion? Roll call please.
Vedder?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Designate financial depositories. Council adopting resolution 21, excuse me, 22-01-03, a resolution designate the following financial depositories as presented.
Move.
By Helms.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Questions or discussion? Roll call please.
Vedder?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number four, designate ACH origination in online banking. Consider adopting resolution 22-01-04, a resolution authorizing persons listed as presented below. Subject to any express restrictions is authorized for ACH origination in online banking. Is there a motion? Move by Helms?
Second.
Second by Riappel. Any questions or discussion? Roll call please.
Vedder?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. There are four minutes for December 21st council meeting and December 28th work session. Is there a motion? Move by Helms.
Second.
Second by Vedder. Any questions or discussion? Roll call please.
Vedder?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. There's no scheduled bid lettings. No public hearings can move on to the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda will be adopted at one motion. However, council members may request individual items to be polled from the consent agenda for discussion and action if they choose. Any members want seven through 11 polled? If not, entertain a motion of seven through 11, please.
Move seven through 11.
By Riappel.
Second.
Second by Larson. Questions or discussion? Roll call please.
Vedder?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Nowhere receipt of reports of officer boards and commissions. There's none. Communication, there's none. Old business, there's none. Move on to new business. Consider adopting resolution 22-01-09, supporting the authority to impose a local sales tax to fund specific capital improvements providing region benefit to establish a percent tax and dollar amount revenue to be raised by the tax over so many years to authorize the city to use issued bonds supported by the sales tax revenue. Need a specific motion.
Motion for a 1.25 for the 30-year plan as specified by Mr. Hutton and the committee.
There is a motion?
Second.
Second by Demers. We'll have discussion. Reed, do you want to address? Mr. Mayor, I know you have something.
I'll be brief. I love the project. I love what it's going to do for our community. It's going to draw people in. It opens the door for us to have some bigger activities here. It's going to be good for business as we are aware. I do have a concern about the tax rate and the term of it. And I guess I can leave it at that. And I'll have to decide depending on how the vote goes and how everything else goes, how to proceed coming out of this. But please know, whatever way this goes, I like what we're doing. I like the way that we're thinking ahead. I like that we're catching up on some maintenance with the changes in the R22 and the whole thing. Refrigeration plants, all up to speed. A lot of good things included in this. And of course, the baseball. The opportunity for larger tournaments and opening up some additional baseball diamonds. It's a good package, good program. Top dollar ticket price. As to the cost of the project, the term of the tax and the amount of the tax, I do have a concern with that. But that's something that you all know. So let's hear how it goes.
Mr. Vedder?
Just a point of clarification. If this passes, can we still tweak the project or are we held to what's been shown us so far?
Mr. Hutton, you want to address that, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Vedder, I would say that the project can still be tweaked and adjusted. Certainly in the budget, the total budget of the project, you know, what you're approving tonight, I wouldn't say that you're specifically approving a $37 million project. We understand that we haven't done design on these projects yet even, so there's going to be some changes and some alterations that need to come with it. With that said, I would certainly hope and ask for that the scope or like the design concept of the project is something that you guys would be approving tonight. That doesn't mean that we can't have some discussion on that going forward, but I think that's going to help myself and the committee and the community as a whole understand going to the next steps, that this is kind of the design and the concept we want to push forward on and give us some real direction on where to go. That would be, I don't think that's a requirement. That would be a request on my part so that we can continue to do the work that we need to do to keep it moving forward. But certainly I think there'd be some ability to make changes. Yeah.
What I'd like maybe Reed, if you could do this for me, I know there's probably more people watching, more people tuned in now. Explain to everyone or go through the process of why we're doing this right now. Especially at the end of January, the timeframe, what we have to do from what we did before. So we understand that this is not something we're approving that's going into effect. It has to go through a process. So that we all know that in November, if everything gets approved down there, that everybody will have a say in it. So if you want to go?
Absolutely. Thank you. So really, I think this is probably step, it maybe doesn't feel like step one, but it's in a lot of ways now step one of a five-step process. The first step in this is the city council would pass a resolution of support for a local sales tax increase, authorizing myself to go put together the package that we would bring to the state legislature's tax committees by a January 31st deadline. At that deadline, as long as we meet that deadline with the information that the Minnesota state statute requires to impose a sales tax, that would be reviewed by the tax committees both in the House of Representatives and in the Senate. They would review them, have an opportunity to interview us, to ask questions, for us to prove to them why these projects are important for our community and for our region. We have to prove the regional significance that the projects hold and then understand, they're going to want to understand what the projects are and why we feel they're regionally significant. Why sales tax is a way to or a good way for us in our mind to be able to pay for the project. Once the state legislature then approves a bill that includes the authority to vote for a local sales tax, that project would then come back to the city council. There'd be some work in the city council on our city's part to approve the ballot questions that would be included in the November general election. We have to have those ballot questions for whatever the project is. Mr. Vedder, to your question, right now, the way this resolution is proposed is it's two separate project sites that would allow for two ballot questions. One ballot question for the Civic Center site, a second ballot question for the VFW and Blue Line site. Certainly the project scope and the budget could change within those, but in the resolution, those two projects are included as separate. As we would intend two separate ballot questions. That's required by the state of Minnesota's statute on how to impose a local sales tax. We need to have those ballot questions finalized, I think it's by the first Tuesday in August, no later than that, to be able to get them sent back to the state, to have them added to the ballot for the November 2022 general election. At that general election, then our residents, assuming all those things get boxes get checked, then our residents would have an opportunity to vote yes or no on the ability to impose this sales tax proposal and see the projects move forward.
Okay. Another thing that may be addressed too, I know maybe we're repeating ourselves, but I know there's a lot, like I said before, it's more people paying attention today. Social media, people calling, emailing, just making, you know, statements of, you know, it seems like we're trying to push this thing and going into fact, you know, I'm glad you explained that. And maybe kind of explain what, from here going backward, what the process was to get to where we're at now of why we're not from where we started two years ago or a year and a half ago. Maybe kind of touch, you know, bird's eye view of it, you know, not dove right into every detail of it, but
Yeah.
I think that'll help a lot of people understand why we're at right now, excuse me.
Certainly. You know, I think the discussion begins, the R22 is the important aspect that started all of this, knowing that we have R22 refrigerant in two of our ice arenas. And there was a bill that comes along with replacing that. That in 2019 started a discussion amongst the city council and city staff of if we have to invest X million of dollars in replacing and fixing what I'll call, for the lack of better term, at this point, still deferred maintenance type items, parking lot improvements, R22 replacements, those things in the arenas, we're going to spend millions of dollars on repairs and improvements in the arena that, in arenas that the general public will never see. Right? And so that created a bigger conversation. In 2019, first part of 2020, we brought a different sales tax plan to the state legislature for approval. That included a rink addition at the Civic Center. It included retrofitting the VFW arena into a multipurpose facility instead of having it continue as an ice arena. We received a lot of feedback from our community. When that sales tax proposal got shut down due to the coronavirus pandemic starting up, they said the Minnesota state legislature said they weren't going to entertain any sales tax proposals that year. As soon as they did that, that automatically pushed this effort or this proposal back to the November 2022 election because it has to be on a general election. So every two years is our only opportunity to do that. We decided as a community that that was the right time for us to maybe take a longer look at this and understand better what our community thought they wanted to see in an investment back in its recreation facilities. We had surveys out for months through the summer of 2020. We received more than 800 total survey responses that guided this process in what we want facility improvements to look like. And largely those survey results helped to put together the concept plan that we've had out for the last few months now for people to see. Starting in January of 2021, by your authority as a city council, we enacted or put together a building committee that had a number of different interested parties and individuals that are residents of our community, that are different user groups, whether that be hockey, figure skating, baseball, people from the school district, general residents that just had kids that grew up in our programs, all participated in a building committees. I think we had 13 total meetings starting in January through the middle of September to put together this concept plan, to really dive into this budget of what do we want to see the facilities look like? What is the work that needs to get done to the current facilities? And what does that budget look like? And then if we want to improve upon them or make additions or add amenities that can better serve our community, what could those look like? And that all comes into now this big concept plan that we're discussing here tonight and hopefully moving forward a proposal to the state. Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Mr. Helms?
Mr. President. Reed, has the, has a changeover on the R22, has that been done yet?
At the Civic Center, it has not been done yet. Recall though that we do have the Mighty Ducks grant funding. That project was approved last summer. It got delayed due to the shipping delays and supply chain issues. We have all the equipment here in East Grand Forks in our possession now. It'll happen as soon as the ice plant shuts down at the Civic Center this year. We still have that issue to face at the VFW arena though, and those replacement plans are part of this greater building project here.
So we do have the stuff and getting ready for the Civic Center?
It's all, it's all in storage here in East Grand Forks for the Civic Center.
And we have a vendor under contract to install it, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, that's still going to get done regardless if this was to go or not?
That's correct. That gets done next April and May regardless of, aside from all of this.
Okay.
Yeah.
The issue I have on this whole thing is a couple of things. First of all, I can't be convinced that building it and they will come is the right words we should be using because I just don't believe that doing what we want to do is going to bring people to East Grand Forks. We need to get some business. We need to get something for them to come here for other than just hockey and baseball. Okay? So I'm having a hard time with that. We need to get some retail, some business in. So other people can help pay for this stuff too, you know? And the other thing I'm having a hard time with is tying a city down for 30 years. I just, I can't do it. I can't do it. It's just, it's just tying the city's hands for doing stuff down the road when we've got so many other things that we need so bad. I'm not saying that we don't need to fix what we have. We can fix it a heck of a lot cheaper than what we want to do right now. That's, that's my opinion. And if we can get to that point where we can just do the repairs and whatever, I mean, you've been talking for two years to us that this ice plant could go down any day and it's still running. So so that's what bothers me. I mean, anything could go down today. You could put the new ice plant in there and that could fail tomorrow. I mean, that's just the way it is and there's nothing you can do about that. So I really have a hard time voting on this, voting yes on this at this rate and this term. So that's what I have.
You have the council members?
Oh.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, you know, looking at a project, this scope should put some hesitancy into all our kind of thoughts and our hearts or whatever because it is a big project. It's something that's potentially, you know, the biggest thing that this city does since probably the flood, you know? And for a long time, you know, and it's an impact statement. It's an impact piece. It's a statement to not just our residents, not just, you know, it's to the entire region. What is East Grand Forks and are we open for business? Are we, you know, what type of community are we? So I think it is an important thing that we discuss and I think we have done, you know, the background on it. I think we in our guts know who we are and what we do. I think in our guts and in our hearts, we feel pride for our communities and we want to show that. And one of the ways you do that is in the buildings and in the type of services and stuff that you provide. But yeah, the 30 years is a, it's a big ask. It's a long time. Hopefully Reed will still be here when that, when that tax goes away or whatever. And hopefully I'm still around, maybe not in this chair, but definitely want to be here when that goes away. But it is an investment in not only our future but our present. You know, we invest in a lot of things over time, you know, we've, we invested in a road on 23rd for, I think, 25 years or whatever that we've tied up money for. I just, I think, like, I get it, you know, talking to the mayor. Maybe the, when you pencil it out on a spreadsheet, it makes sense to, you know, just stay within this one thing. But I think there's something bigger than just what the spreadsheet can show on this. And to Mr. Helms' point about build it and they will come, I don't think it's just like this notion that we're throwing it out. You know, we've, we've used the chambers own data. They've, they paid big dollars to do, you know, analysis of what are industries, what are services, what those things are that we should be leveraging to bring people into our city to maximize our potential. And the number one thing that people are looking for is experience, recreation, all those type of things. People, that's what they're telling us. And like I said, it's still, it's a study. It's not, it's in the future. There is some risk to it, but that's what they're telling us they want. That's our biggest growth market right there. And to that point, like, you can play that game of chicken and egg, like, yeah, if we have more restaurants, well, then we'd have more revenue to build this. Well, if you don't have something for them to come here to, you know, do the restaurants, they're not going to come and do the others. So I get that. I just think at this point in time, you know, we've had people in the past that have, you know, that have stepped up and said, these are the type of facilities. These are the things that, you know, are statement pieces for East Grand Forks in the past. And I think, you know, a generation or two have actually passed since some of those have gone. And I think it's time for us to kind of do this, step up and try to do this on our own, you know? So like I said, I fully support going with, you know, the percent and a quarter and doing it for the 30 years. And to Mr. Hutton's point, you know, it is funded by sales packs, but it's partially, we want to fund it with other sources as well, you know? We're looking, you know, we're going to ask people to step up and fundraise for this and those type of things too. So yeah, there's a lot said, I guess, but I hope that we can get on board with this. Oh, I wanted to touch on the sales packs. You know, it's been said that, you know, we're, we're going to be at the top end of what, you know, other communities are in Minnesota, and that is true. You know, we'll be percent or so higher than what our people are across the river. That's probably going to change listening to what Grand Forks County is going to do. So they're looking at increasing their, so that gap will narrow. It's kind of indicative of what, you know, different governments are looking to do. They're trying to find revenue sources outside of property tax to fund these type of things. Because they know that these type of things just aren't going to be fundable by property tax alone. So people, communities that are growing, that are thriving, that are trying to attract people are going to use sales tax as, as their, one of their revenue tools. I'm a bit hesitant to think that, you know, this creates just this unbelievable, you know, disadvantage for our businesses. You know, we've had since, what, the 60s, a six and 6% plus, you know, advantage on clothing on this side of the river. And we have lost every, you know, business except for, I guess, Cabela's is still around. It sells clothes. But we should have, you know, jean outlet stores all over town if that's the case. I mean, that's the, that's the biggest stark sales tax advantage that there is, is on clothes and stuff. And we don't have any of that. So, you know, we, yes, it is, I think. But I think too, one of the things is the people that are most most hesitant about it have also been the most vocal about how terrible East Grand Forks' business culture is. Maybe that becomes a self fulfilling prophecy. If you keep telling people that it's terrible to do business in East Grand Forks, if you keep telling them that that's, if sales tax is shutting us down, maybe that gets out. You know, and maybe we should try to stop people from saying, hey, it's a terrible place to do business in East Grand Forks. No, it's not. We're going to, we're going to drive the people to East Grand Forks to come to these businesses. We're going to try everything we can do. You know, we're going to build this great place, build it, and hopefully they'll come. You know, that's going to be hopefully the driver, you know? I think we need to have some positive self-talk about what we can offer. I don't think it's a bad place to do business in East Grand Forks, you know? Property taxes in East Grand Forks commercial have some great opportunities versus North Dakota with our border city credits, you know? So like I said, let's talk positive about East Grand Forks. Let's build for the future. Let's do something big. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
To me, it's, it's a simple, if the city council isn't for this, this, and we want the people to be for it, you know, I mean, we've got to get together here and get this thing going, get it passed and go forward. This is a lot of time that everybody's put into this project and I, and I want to see it go forward as Mr. Hutton has presented and the committee. So that's where I stand with this. And I hope it goes.
Any other council members? If anybody wants in the public to speak? Anybody in the audience like to address the council this time? If you do, come up to the podium and state your name and address. I would appreciate it. Any other council members?
Good. Icebreaker. Someone's going to break the ice.
Gregoire?
Ryan Gregoire, 14, 1642 8th Street, Southeast, East Grand Forks. Been a lifetime resident. I'm a fourth generation business owner, Burt's Truck Equipment. If you guys don't know where that is, it's on the wet side of the dyke. We're all the country out there. It's just a joke I always tell everyone. I also own RG Truck Sales in town. Two years ago, we did own four businesses in town. Due to the pandemic in the state of Minnesota, it was real tough to run them too. So now we're down to two. I've been through the sport program. I played football. I played youth baseball. I golfed. Four-time letter winner in hockey. Been to the state tournament twice. Larson and I played on the D-line. So I get the sports. I want my kids, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be both sides of this here, guys. I'm, I'm going to talk out of both sides of my mouth, so just hear me out. I want the kids in the community to have the best of the best. I want east side to be the best of the best. Okay? And these facilities would be great. I know you guys have worked very, very hard on all this. Appreciate it. The plans are unbelievable. I mean, what you guys have done has been awesome. But I also got to talk about the sales tax. I am a sales tax collector in the city of East Grand Forks. Okay? And I sell everything from a $12 part up to $150,000. Okay? Maybe more. All right? So you start adding a percent and a quarter to some of these bigger ticket items, that's a big deal. Okay? It adds up. Hop, skip and a jump down to Fargo, hop, skip and a jump across the river. It's, it adds up. And it's a little concerning to me. Okay? And there's just a select few of us in town, you guys. You guys know that. I could probably ask for a list and you guys could get me one. It's pretty short. You know, on a 30-year commitment on this, hopefully I'm close to retirement, you know? You guys will all be retired and at your lake home. A lot of the people in the audience, their kids are going to be done and gone. And I'm still going to be here whittling away, you know, on the old east side, you know, so like I said, I'm not trying to be negative or nothing like that. But, and we talk about growth and economic impact. There's really nowhere to grow on the east side as far as family. You know, on the north end, we got some stuff going on which is good and south end, we got a little bit, but we've got a dyker on our community. We can't really get it out there. You know, same thing for the businesses. Like I said before, we're, we're a limited group that's going to do this. And we got skin in the game. You know, I don't know if you guys collect sales tax at all. The mayor probably does. Dale maybe does? Nope, no, no sales tax there either. All your big factories in town, that's all wholesale stuff. So there's going to be a very limited amount of us that's going to, that's going to tackle this project. And like I said, do I, do I want my kids to enjoy the greatest of the greatest? Absolutely. Do I want every kid to? Without a doubt. I want the best for this community. I bleed green. But we also have to, I got to look out for my own backyard as well, you know? So I guess that's just my two cents and thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Any other members who want to speak? Brendan?
Mr. President, Mayor, members of the council, Brandon Basfle, 1508 Park Drive, Southeast. I'm going to speak not only as a citizen, Southeast. I'm gonna speak not only as a citizen, but I'm also gonna put my other hat on as a school board president. I'm gonna try to educate a little bit. I appreciate the mayor and everybody talking about one percent versus one point two five. Here's how, here's how the school district is funded. Majority of the school district is funded on a per pupil basis. Here's what's gonna happen. You go one percent on deferred maintenance, sixteen million dollars, what have you, something's gonna happen five years down the road. How are you gonna pay for that? You're not going back to bond because it's an off-year. You're gonna tax the citizens. What's gonna happen? It's just gonna have a trickle effect. Those citizens are gonna start leaving the community, so you can continue to talk about businesses and things like that, but we have to remember the citizens of, of the community and how we want the city to grow. By not doing this, there's several communities down in the cities' areas that they came in front, their council came in front of the citizens and said, if you don't do this, we're gonna give you a property, it's gonna be affected by property taxes. That's the same thing here. That's exactly how you guys work. If we can't, can't get a sales tax to fall through for a certain amount of money, you're gonna have to come back with property taxes. Then what's gonna happen, it's probably not gonna happen overnight, but it's gonna happen. And then the businesses, Ryan just talked about businesses, there's not a lot of them. We're gonna have even less of them. So by doing this, going back to Mr. Demers' comments, by doing something like this, having a regional project, putting the funds into it, that's gonna get, be a destination in the city. We're gonna be able to be, you can go to Roseau, and I'm not talking about hockey, you know, baseball, anything like that. I'm talking about the amenities themselves. We do something like this, we're gonna have more than one hotel over time. You're gonna get those developers that are gonna come in. You're gonna get what Mr. Demers said about them taking advantage of the tax credits that, that are here. But by going low, starting low, personally, I, I don't, I don't feel that that's, that's, that's the right direction to go. I think that's gonna have a trickle effect on different taxing entities, especially, especially the school district. We're gonna end up, over time, losing population. Once we lose population, we lose kids. Then we start, then we start losing staff, because every single year, our population's been dwindling since the flood. It has never gone up higher during the flood. I got a report this morning on school district numbers. You'll hear on Monday night at my meeting that our enrollment's gone down even more since the Christmas break. So people are leaving the community. I think that the easiest, or the quickest way to identify that is from the school district. We know right away, we, we know when people leave. And they're not just leaving not to go to school, they're gonna go to school someplace else. Yes, we have that. Some go to Riverside, some go to Sacred Heart, some just say, I'm not going to school. But for the most part, they're leaving the community. And that's my fear. If we don't move forward with the sales tax, tax of a, of a decent amount, sixty million dollars, that, that one percent, that's wonderful. It, it certainly is. But it's a deferred maintenance. I sat on that building committee. We went through, we did the due diligence, and that's, gets the bare bones. And if that's, that's what we want, great, but I think it's gonna have a trickle effect, just the bare bones. Somebody's gonna, Reed's gonna be back in front, or somebody else is gonna be back in front that, once Reed retires, and like, I think, Mr. Helms, you said, who knows? It could take, it could take years. But it also could take, could happen, happen tomorrow. So the right thing to do, I think, is to, rather than deciding up here, you know, go with the citizens that were, that were on that, that committee, the surveys, where, you know, everyone looked up, do you want one percent? Do you want one point two five? One point two five? I mean, more? Great. But we realize that, that one point five, that's, that's, that's quite a big chunk. But one point two five came back in those surveys, those eight hundred people, that's what they were willing, and that's what, that's what they wanted. I think as, as council members and as, as elected officials, and as an elected official myself, you know, that's, that's our duty, that is our duty to, to support that. So move forward with the one point two five. Hopefully it goes down to the cities. They approve it, it comes back, and then leave it up to the citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the council?
Hang on. Judd Stouse, ten thirty James Avenue Southeast. I guess my, my biggest question is, and concern is, if we go to the one percent, we're, we're basically talking about one to one point two five, so it's point two five percent. I think we all agree upon that, right? So if we go to the one percent, my biggest fear, that sixteen million dollars, we're not gonna get the votes to even pass that, because the people that we've talked to throughout the building committee, throughout the town, the citizens of our town are not interested in voting yes on the sales tax for a Band-Aid, for, you know, so-called deferred maintenance. I've had them collect to me personally and say they're not, they're voting no. And you know what? I'm voting no. Because it's not good enough, flat out. So that point two five, over thirty years, gives us another six and a half million, gets us up to twenty-eight, gets us a heck of a lot closer than where we would be with the one percent over twenty years. And like I said, I don't think we're gonna get the votes, judging by what we've heard throughout the surveys, talking with people in the community. So now, what are we gonna do? If it's a no, no vote. That's the question that I, I don't know. And that's something that we're gonna have to answer as, as a city, because I know, Dale, you, you've said, Reed just talked about it, you know, it, it could happen any day, and it could happen any day, but let's be honest, these ranks, these ballparks, they need a lot, a lot of work. It's gonna have to happen sooner than later. And if we get, if, if we don't get the one percent, we're starting all over, and where do we go? That's all I got. Thanks.
Thanks, Judd. Anybody else like to address the council this time? Any council members have any other comments?
I guess I would offer just one more little thought. Whatever we do decide, let's just say it was one percent for twenty years, and whatever that brings in, plus what we can fundraise, we're probably getting up close to twenty-five million dollars at that point, getting close to that number. Keeping in mind that Badet did one ice sheet, small, I know Reed, we've talked about this, it was kind of an odd situation, and it was finished in the year twenty eighteen for six and a half million dollars. In the year twenty nineteen, Morehead finished the second phase of the Culon Arena renovation with a third ice sheet and a lot of renovation at a total cost of eight million dollars. Right now Alexandria is gonna add a third ice sheet with some dryland training facilities built in. They've worked on it for ten years. They've come up with a local share, almost five million, and the, and the state bonded for about five million, for a total of ten million dollars to the project going on in Alexandria right now for their facilities. So twenty-five million, or twenty-two million, or twenty-three million is not chump change. It's a ton of money. So wherever we end up, this is an enormous project, the scale of which way more than Badet did, way more than Morehead did, way more than Alexandria is about to do. Whatever we do here, it's huge. And I don't know where we're gonna end up, and I'm, I'm all for it. I love what we're doing. We may disagree on the final dollar, on the bottom line, but please know, whatever we do, this is way beyond a Band-Aid, this is way beyond bare bones. This is big dollars to make our facilities really nice. So wherever we end in the scale of what we're willing to do, this is gonna be an amazing project. Have no doubt about that. Thanks.
Reapel?
You can throw those out there, Mr. Mayor, but they're comparing apples to grapes on this whole thing.
They're real numbers.
They're not putting in, they're not putting in the ice system, because that's feeding off one of the other rinks. They're not putting in the parking lots. Badet, for example, up in Lake of the Woods, they're using the school to do theirs. So they're feeding off something else, and they don't have to go through all that. If they had to do that other infrastructure, that'd be a twelve to fourteen million dollar project.
Not true.
Easily, easily, because they'd have to put all that other stuff in.
Not true. Not, not for the parking service.
You know what an ice rink runs, a system? If they had to put that in, that'd cost them arm and a leg.
We just did a new one. How much was that?
That's not a new one.
Correct. What are we putting into ours, and what are we getting?
Well, so we didn't put in an ice plant. We put in upgrades to our compressor system. It's a retrofit. It's making use of more than half of our current system. We're spending three hundred and ninety thousand dollars to do that.
Perfect.
Okay? That's not the ice floor. The ice floor and the rest of the components of an ice plant, our, our line item price for the VFW replacement is right around one point eight million dollars.
Correct. But here we're talking about just the, the cooling plant, the refrigeration plant, above and beyond.
You need to understand what an ice plant is. When we call an ice plant system, that is the floor, the piping that runs through the floor, all of the compressor parts that are all component of it.
But the Badet project also, the Badet project included the floor. So we're just talking about the overage to the refrigeration system. The Badet project included the floor.
Correct.
Yep.
But not the parking.
Correct.
And that's a major issue.
Oh, for sure. You know, these are numbers, and that's a very low number, but whatever we do, this is gonna be a very huge and very good project.
Any other council members?
I made the motion to, for this, and I just want to remind you, Pete, the thirty-year thing, the, you know, it could come earlier. Twenty-five years ago this year will, is the, the flood, and, and it seems like a long time, but it's just, I could remember it like it was yesterday. So the years go by, and though, these, these years would be some good years to, for this community to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If we have no other comments, I'll move to roll call, please.
Better?
No.
Helms?
No.
Reapel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Move on to number thirteen. Consider authorizing a request to submitted, to be submitted to the Metropolitan Planning Organization to add the industrial park transportation study to the twenty twenty-two work program schedule. Your motion?
Move.
Moved by Reapel.
Second.
Second by Larson. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Move on to claim, consider authorizing a city administrator clerk treasurer to issue payment on recommended bills and payroll.
Move.
Moved by Johnson. Second by Helms. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Mayor Gander?
Just one thing. Number ten, under our consent agenda, we approved all of our nominees for boards and commissions that were reappointed for this year, and I just want to say thank you to everybody, including a lot of you that are sitting here, that have served on this special group that we put together to look into the arenas. Thank you for all that you do to serve our community. Every one of our board members, every one of our commission members volunteering your time, some for a small stipend, but the work that you do and the, and the connection that you give to our community, we couldn't run this city without you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Better?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Helms?
Thank you. I went to Mr. Olson's retirement open house at the Water and Light Department. It was a very good, nice little retirement thing. I was able to talk to Mr. Grabansky that's taking his spot, and he seems to be really fired up and excited about the job, so I think we'll be in pretty good hands there again still, so that was a nice, nice little party to go to.
Mr. DePelle?
Nothing.
Mr. Johnson?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Demers?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Mr. Larson?
Just want to say thank you to everyone that's been involved in leading us up to today on this Parks and Rec project. Appreciate everything that you're doing for your community.
Mr. Murphy?
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Grost?
Nothing unless there's questions for me.
Mr. Emery?
I have nothing.
Anything in department ads? Entertainer motion to adjourn?
Move.
Moved by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Reapel. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Motion is carried. Immediately adjourned.